Ready to roll. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Monday, September 19th. It is 6:00 PM. And I'm opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting. So, let's see. Anybody recording the meeting?
Free Town.
Anybody else recording the meeting? All right. That five minutes past 6:00, we have a board, a Soil and Wood meeting. And that'll probably last all of five or six minutes. And then at 6:15, we're going to discuss with Angels in America, MAPPA, the MAPPA Police Wives regarding the Gold Blue Ribbon. They're going to tell us about that. And then we'll have, well, I guess we'll fire it. Anybody here for weekly public discussion?
Mr. Chair, on the Health Board, I received a letter saying that, actually, an email, that we're going to be having a flu clinic here at the Council on Agent. Saturday, September 24th, 2016, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, I'm sorry. We're offering this year's flu vaccines for anyone over the age of 18. We also have a high dose flu vaccine for adults aged 65 and older. Other vaccines available will be the Numavax 23 and the Neuvacar 13. During the event, we'll be providing blood pressure checks, tick-borne disease prevention information, and live for life and refreshments. That's through the Board of Health.
Do they have to sign up for this?
I don't believe so. As far as I know, they just show off.
Wasn't there one more other thing?
Walk-ins welcome.
No, no. Wasn't there a, did you get another, I got an email today about a hazardous waste drop-off date?
I did see that, but I didn't see it on, oh, it's on the bottom. Free Town is offering the town residents a hazardous waste drop-off date. It takes place October 22nd, 2016, 9:00 AM to noon. I wanted to mention the other one, because this weekend coming up, and we will have another meeting between November and December. Anybody can come down, get a free flu shot.
That's this Saturday?
This Saturday, September 24th, 2016, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Sponsored by Radio.
Well, I guess I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the Soil and Wood? Besides us three?
We still don't have a phone.
We still don't have a phone.
They were all notified. In fact, I talked to Kevin. I did the last week.
We've got time.
Yeah, we've got three minutes.
Do you want to read the letter from Stop &amp; Shop?
Go ahead.
You want to do that now?
I don't know if we have time for that.
Well, let's not rush that. Kevin, you want to come up and we can get rolling with this Soil and Wood? That way, we won't hold you up. All right. I'd like to open the Soil and Wood meeting, which is within the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Soil and Wood meeting for Monday, September 19th. It's rolling around 6:05. And present from the Soil and Wood, Kevin Dismaris, Lisa Pacchico, myself, Paul Sadek, and Walt Jones. So, we have very few things on the agenda. We want to approve the minutes from December 1st, December 15th, and September 7th. However, we had, we have the September 7th minutes here, and the September, December 15th minutes. And December 7th was strictly a meeting, it wasn't a meeting, we went out and reviewed the, made the onsite inspection. So, there's really no minutes, other than the fact that we went out, we did onsite inspection. Soil and Wood went out and did that. That was on December 7th. December 15th, we have minutes, and September 7th, we have minutes.
Make motion to approve December 15th to September 7th.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I want to abstain, since I was not on the board for the December 15th.
Is there any other business we attend to?
We don't have the, uh...
No.
No, if we don't have, there's, I thought, there's a number of sets of minutes that don't exist. We had some turnover, as you all know, cannot find those minutes. So, what we have is what we have. And we shouldn't have any more issues, since we have somebody doing it. The other thing on the, that we should talk about is when we should go out and do the onsite inspections. Anybody have any preference?
No.
Usually, we do it on a Saturday or a Sunday morning. That's not, whichever. Okay. What we'll do is we'll get something as we get into November, early November? Yeah, that's probably it.
Late October, early November, yeah.
Yeah.
Forty is pretty cold.
After town meeting, so.
Or it gets too too cold.
Not that, not that we all have to be there.
Right, right.
Because sometimes, where we shot something.
Sometimes.
Now, get a good close-up on Lisa.
I wear all-train shoes, I'm good to go.
I'll be, yeah, I'll be away the rest of Columbus State, so.
Okay, so we'll do it early November, early November?
Yeah.
Anything else? You're not going to wear your deer costume?
No, I'm good.
That's it?
Yeah.
Motion made.
Okay, no, don't go anywhere. Motion?
Oh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second. Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I know we went through public discussion already, but I forgot that I received a phone call before I got here. And I don't know if anybody's been down to Hathaway Park recently, but there is like a swath of dead fish.
Peated bunker.
What is it?
I think they call it peated bunker.
Okay.
Or this small, yeah, hey. We, I'm assuming that's what you're asking the state for?
Yes, I am, sorry.
Does that mean you're the conservation?
Yes, that's right, yes.
I have yet to confirm this instance.
Okay.
Last year, we had a very similar instance around the same time of the year. I contacted the state, it was a larger fish, but low oxygen in the water.
Okay. And there's like a sheen on the water, that's not?
That's a, that's a natural sheen.
Okay.
That happens when organics break down.
Okay.
You can get what looks like a little bit of an oil sheen on there. Say, a person came to the town hall today and mentioned it to me, so I went out and looked at it, put a call in to the state, haven't gotten back yet. But similar situation happened last year, low oxygen in the, in the water, because you have to have a lot of rain.
And rain cures that.
Going over the dam.
Right, yep.
There's no water going over the dam, so that's normal, natural after the day.
I just wanted to make sure, in case you guys get phone calls tomorrow, because it's going to be pretty snowy, I would assume, so.
They had this happen, I'm trying to think, it was, we had, it was recent, within the last week and a half.
They may have, I didn't read that. They had several instances last year in areas similar to ours, salt marshes, where you don't get a lot of high-volume turnover with the water, especially when the river's increasing now.
Thanks, Kevin. Don't need to hold you up.
No problem.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, welcome.
All right, so.
Sure thing. Have a good night, guys.
Bye.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is, we had an email from Lisa Curly. Come right up. And you can explain to the people that are here, and also to the cameras, what you're here for.
Do I have to stand? Can I say it?
Whatever you want.
I'll stand, whatever. I don't want my back, that's rude. So, my name is Lisa Curly, I'm from Bridgewater. Here are a couple of representatives from my nonprofit, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that's called Angels in America. Our mission statement is making America stronger, providing hope and encouragement, one good deed at a time. So, we never go anywhere empty-handed, so this is for your board, just some treats, because it's a random act of kindness. In any case.
Thank you.
Very welcome. You have to share.
From one girl to another.
She never eats that stuff. It's only the guys at the end that do.
Yeah, well, there is some, you know, there's some sugar free, just in case, you know, and there's some that isn't chocolate. In any case, my vice president here, Kim Stankdale, came across a woman who is with the Massachusetts State Police Wives. And they have an objective to turn the state blue in support of our law enforcement, considering everything going on. So, they were looking for people in towns that would assist them. They seem to be out towards the midwestern part of the state, very geographically challenged. I think that's where they are. So, we're over here, and sitting in a great position on the East Coast, trying to assist them. So, we've gone to several towns that are around us, Bridgewater, Middleborough, Lakeville, Free Town, East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Rainham, Cab has already been done around, that's the only town I know of that's around here. So, essentially, all we're doing is asking for permission to put up blue ribbons on like public buildings, if they'll allow it, and telephone polls, things like that, just to show support for our law enforcement. And even though it's the State Police Wives, they're definitely doing it for all law enforcement, it's not just State Police.
Sounds like a beautiful tribute, in my eyes.
Sounds good to me.
So, you have my support.
We need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have the gold blue ribbons placed through Free Town and support a local Free Town police offices. And also, you know, turn it over to the members of the Free Town, their households, if they want to do the same thing on their front doors, or their mailboxes, or things like that, so to show support for, uh, police offices, I think that would be also great.
Absolutely, that's what we're trying to encourage as well.
In Middleborough and Cab, there have been four vans decorated with flags. Is that the same group?
However, Middleborough hasn't been done, to my knowledge, yet. We actually just got an email today that they, they're going to, they just put us on the agenda for their Selectmen's meeting. Carver has been done, it's out of town, I get too often, so I'm assuming that it might have something to do with that, so.
I know, I know the group from Carver did the police station and those few town offices that are just right there.
Yeah.
And then they went to another part of the town and did in that area. I actually got an update from the Mass State Police Wives today. They are in 50 towns throughout Massachusetts, 26 states, and going to be 27 in a couple of weeks, because New Hampshire's doing a few.
Very good. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any with you, any ribbons with you?
We don't, we're starting on October 1st, is the day that we pick to start doing the towns around here. And that's simply because they're also involved in something called Gold Gold, which is for childhood, September is childhood cancer awareness. So, a lot of the towns that we did gold, we're going to take them down and put up the blue. Kind of saves some time.
You're a busy one.
We are, we're a very busy group, but thank you.
Great, thank you all so much.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
We've got a couple of our offices here, plus our chief, anybody want to comment? You guys want to comment?
I think it's a, first of all, thank you very much, we greatly appreciate it, especially in this environment, so, once again, thank you very much.
And we also have a thing where, in the state of Massachusetts, we're trying to reach all police and fire departments and bring them a meal. They might not know it, or remember it, they might not even have forgotten it, but their department did get it from us at one point. And we also, we very much support our fleets in fire. We are also in the middle of a campaign where we're trying to send at least one care package to at least one police department and one fire department in every state across the country. We've done about 26 at this point, so.
Very good.
Yeah, just, just so you know, in that package that we gave you, there's also some of our cards.
I saw them.
So, just so, you can see that we try to provide a card and a resource there for people who knew those and that would need our help. There's a website that we have, if people want.
So, you're going to start in town, our, 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 our?
Yes, yep. So, you'll start seeing those little ribbons, and you'll know where they came from.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I know we're going to be rude, but we have a meeting now. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, let's see. Anybody here from your friends of Hathaway Park? They're not coming?
Nope, I got a message from Anne Morse today. She said that they apologize, that they can't come, that they would like the name to be Friends of Hathaway Park.
They want a name?
The name to be Friends of Hathaway.
Friends of Hathaway Park, that's what they say.
On the plaque?
Hmm?
Is that for the plaque that, I guess so.
Right. Sign?
This is for the plate, to name the playground.
Yes.
Right?
To name the playground? I thought it was doing something from, donated from?
Yeah, I don't know what this is, I guess.
Donated from?
You probably put up a plaque with names of any, anyone or any company that donated $500 or something.
Right, right, it's for the donation, it's a plaque to recognize the donations, right?
Yeah.
So, we're not naming the playground?
That's a different thing.
That's all she said.
Well, you know what, why don't we hold it short? Let's have them commit it next week, if they can tell us what they want to go for. Okay?
That sounds good.
All right. All right, Walt, I know you had a meeting earlier this week.
Late last week.
Last week. Want to read that letter?
Well, we, we, as the board knows, the board voted to send a letter to Stop &amp; Shop with regards to the concerns of the citizens that live in the neighborhood surrounding their South Main Street facility, and their trucking, the concerns with the truck routes is. After receiving the board, after receiving the letter from the board, the Vice President of Operations, Mr. Correct, requested some information. I sat down with him, we had a short conversation, about a half an hour or so, and he said he'd be responding to this board with a letter directly with what they would be willing to do, and what considerations they have taken in the past and what they want to take in the future. So, this letter appears to be that response from Stop &amp; Shop. It's entitled, it's addressed to the Free Town Board of Selectmen. Again, this is them writing, "I am Vice President of Distributions and Transportation Operations for the Stop &amp; Shop Supermarket Company, LLC, and manage, and manage the Stop &amp; Shop Warehouse Facility at 136 South Main Street, Free Town, Mass. Thank you for your recent correspondence, sharing the petition you received from the Free Town residents with homes on South Main Street and other roads in the area. Residents are concerned that trucks accessing and departing the warehouse facility at exit 9 off Route 24 represents safety concerns. Stop &amp; Shop is committed to being a good neighbor in the Free Town community, and we take concerns of the area residents seriously. As they specifically relate to the truck access our distribution facility, Stop &amp; Shop has taken the following actions. Stop &amp; Shop financially supported, supported improvements to South Main Street, including widening the road to improve traffic flow and the safety of its roadways. Stop &amp; Shop vehicle traffic from exit 9 on South Main Street has been reduced by 45% with the opening of exit 8B. Stop &amp; Shop placed signs on South Main Street informing all trucks to avoid use of jake brakes in the residential area, and we ask all drivers to observe posted speed limits. Without knowing whether caused by Stop &amp; Shop vehicles, we have repaired lawns that were damaged by trucks that turned around in nearby yards. Stop &amp; Shop maintenance service teams regularly pick up trash from along Main Street several times a year. We have met with Free Town residents over the years and addressed specific concerns that have been raised. In addition to these actions, and to address safety concerns raised by the area residents, Stop &amp; Shop will take the following additional steps. On September 8th, Stop &amp; Shop requests that all third-party carriers access Route 24 via exit 8B exclusively. We cannot guarantee that all carriers will comply with the request, but our expectation is most will. On September 9th, we placed a sign at the warehouse entrance/exit stating the following, "All outside carriers, please turn right to access Route 24 North and South. Thank you." By September 15th, 2016, all Stop &amp; Shop trucks will exit, will use exit 8B exclusively during school drop and off pickup hours of 6:30 AM through 9:00 AM, and from 1:30 PM through 4:30 PM. While not all truck traffic on South Main Street results from operations of that Stop &amp; Shop warehouse, we certainly want to do what is reasonable and can, what we reasonably can to do to alleviate concerns of area residents. We also appreciate what kind of, what kind words about our many contributions to our local community. Stop &amp; Shop is proud of, to offer many good jobs to local residents at our warehouse facility. We were also pleased to assist area residents in following and allowing a temporary roadway to be built on our property when the local bridge collapsed. Whether we are assisting residents in tough times, or celebrating with the community at our warehouse facility, at the annual Free Town Parade, Council on Agent Cookout, or whatever events that we support, we value the opportunity Free Town has given us to make a difference. Stop &amp; Shop is committed to working with you and other community leaders and residents to address their concerns on their issues. Sincerely, James Labrick, Vice President of Distributions and Transportation Operations of Stop &amp; Shop Supermarket Company, LLC.
I want to thanks Stop &amp; Shop for taking that action and addressing the concerns of the residents that came in and people that signed that petition. Okay, Mr. McCumber, Highway Surveyor, you're up next. I guess you're going to talk about the snowplow contracts? Ready to go with the?
You know, I'm just waiting to hear from, I guess, from Town Council. We've already approved it once. Kim really got a hold of it, decided to make some changes, just going back to Town Council. We just need to, I guess, make some pressure from the Board of Selectmen on Town Council. We've, we've never been this late for these snowplow contracts. I don't know what the changes are, I really don't have a clue. But any chance to add this? Normally, snowplow contracts are in hand by the day, so.
Have you seen what the changes are?
I should, yeah.
Will you approve it with Town Council's final change, changes, anything? But we already approved it in the last year.
Yeah, we already approved it.
I think, I think that it was just grammatical stuff, moving this paragraph.
Just grammatical stuff?
I believe so.
We just, as soon as I get something.
We already approved it, so I think that.
Call from him, right?
Yeah.
We'll put in the signature, go over it, send it to you.
If we have the signature, if they approve it tomorrow, we'll meet tomorrow night, we can sign it, and then we should be all set.
Okay. It's all week?
Yeah. Does that not put us, like, way behind on the law?
Do you normally have the same people, every, year by year, are there turnovers? This year, totally different, because last year was, was it bad?
That's not good. We both looked.
Last year was the worst year ever that we've ever had for contracts and the whole shebang. I'm not sure, this year, our regulations have stiffened up dramatically, so that's going to chase away.
Some of the other people.
Probably going to chase away at least a third of the people we got. Thankfully, the pay rates have gone up to match Lakeville, so that should bring a huge good people, so I'm not too concerned. I just want to make sure we get, we have to get the ball rolling on our end as far as setting up roofs, setting up plowings, inspecting all the vehicles, so, yeah.
Soon we get it in hand, we're better off. Absolutely. So, tomorrow night, we're hoping to have.
Can you send us an email, or send the chair an email, let us know how you made out this for tomorrow, or the day?
We'll sign it tomorrow.
Thanks, I'm sorry.
Good evening, you're right, we'll sign it tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll sign it tomorrow night.
Regional Finance Committee.
Not it.
We need to appoint somebody to the Regional Finance Committee.
Mr. Chair, one minute prior, before we do that, I just wanted to point out, Jack, did we send a letter from Stop, Stop &amp; Shop Response to the head of the?
Mr. Correct.
Mr. Correct?
Yep.
Okay, and we sent it also to the local representative?
Yes.
Because they both responded, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure we sent those response letters.
We need to appoint a representative from the Board of Selectmen to the Regional Finance Committee. I think for the last four or five years, I served on that committee, and you enjoy it so much, well.
I don't, I, I, I can't be a voting member, because the Foreign Act program and the extended programs are all under the regional district's umbrella. I can certainly go, and, like I have in the past, because I know a lot of the history that things were going on, so I don't mind doing that, but I, I can't be a voting member, and I, I don't want to be without a vote on that committee, so.
When is the?
Tomorrow, Wednesday night.
The 28th, I think, is the first one.
Right, not this Wednesday, the following Wednesday.
27th, next Tuesday.
27th, yeah. Kent, are you still representative from the committee?
I'm still representing Finance Committee.
It's important that, it's important because you have to vote, Lisa cannot vote.
Right.
So, you have to vote, and the other important thing is, you've got to watch the proposals, and I'll certainly help you on how the computations go, and I'll show you how the computations go, but I just don't want to do it again. In fact, I mean, I'm not going to run again, so I'll be, there'll somebody be sitting in my place.
Are you going to take back the certa, then, and do the certa meetings while I'm doing the?
Can't do both.
Can't do both?
Well, I used to do both, because I'm a nut, but that's okay. I used to, well, no, I'm not going to take back the certa meeting.
I didn't think you would.
That's on my shit. Okay, so.
So, I can go, I can go next week?
The certa?
No, I can go next week.
You want me to do certa? I'll do, I'll go back, I'll do the certa. You enjoyed the certa.
Yeah.
It was all right. I'll do the certa, I'll do the certa, you can go to the other, fine, all right? And I'll give you my spreadsheets that we use, the computer will ever keep everything, all right?
I may have a planning board meeting, but I can always, I'll have to make arrangements with the planning board to.
Well, even if you can't do that Tuesday, they're not going to vote on anything that Tuesday anyways.
No, if I can do that Tuesday, I'd rather do that, because that's the first one of the season.
Yeah. I'll be there anyway.
So, I'll make a motion. Can I make the motion?
You can make that, uh-huh.
Because you won't make the motion, I know that.
Lisa should make the motion, she's the independent party.
I will make a motion to appoint Robbie as the Regional Finance Committee Chair, and to also appoint Mr. Sadek to the certa board.
I have the second, and I'll second yours, too. All right, motion made, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in favor again?
Aye.
Ally, you've got to change the names again.
Thank God.
And they're going to send the emails back to me now. Okay, so that takes care of that. Get my sheets here. Road opening permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the opening permit for the source on Dr. Bailey Ruick and the installation of the gas service.
Second. Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that takes care of that. All right, let's see, approved Board of Selectmen's minutes from April 20th, 16, June 6th, 16, June 7th, 16, June 9th, 16, June 13th, 16, June 20th, 16, June 27th, 16, July 11th, 16, July 18th, 16, July 29th, 16, August 4th, 16, August 22nd, 16, September 7th, 16, and September 14th, 16. I'm sure we all read them?
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Now, next thing on the agenda is a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Case regarding the intent to remove MAP 252, Lot 43, from Chapter 61A, and the town's right of first refusal. Ally brought, and gave everybody a letter tonight from, regarding that case, it was something in our package, but it didn't have the dollar amount, so she was kind enough to get the dollar amount from, I guess, Karen today, and also a copy of the purchase and sales agreement. The, the property, I guess, is being sold for $170,000, and the rollback taxes are $15,523. and the rollback taxes are fifty thousand, five twenty-three. Wanna buy the property, I guess, is the sixty-four thousand dollar question?
And I believe the planning board.
Oh, yeah, sorry, the planning board didn't say, uh, they didn't think it was a good idea to buy the property.
Uh, Mr. Chair, one abstained since I was on the planning board and voted for this audit, this already.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the right of first refusal to purchase, um, the nine point five acres from chapter sixty-one classification.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody abstained? I abstained, Joe's abstained because he was involved on the planning board. All right, the town administrators report.
Yes, um, I presented a report last Friday, um, and reminded you of the warrant article meeting, the Finance Committee tomorrow night. Um, also attached, uh, the warrant, uh, warrant article for police station, OPM and Architect, I worked with that, with Mark Richer, that article, and with Kim, uh, the source of funds is a question that seemed, needs to be resolved.
So, can I just ask, I haven't seen the warrant articles, so the one that Tim, I had Tim look for, that we use for the schools, we kind of mirrored that one?
It's, it's similar.
Similar, okay. Can we also make sure that on that article, that we include site work as well?
Okay.
Because, um, the school one did not have site work?
Yeah.
And if we're gonna have to do any digging or, uh, looking at that land in any way, um, we wanna make sure that we include that on that warrant article.
For tests or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
First thing. Um, I think free cash is the best bet, uh, but there's, uh, there's the question of the bridge, how are you gonna pay for the bridge work as well? So Kim, will we talk about that tomorrow?
Um, free cap, well, we can talk about that tomorrow night.
Correct.
Because we're gonna be talking about cap stabilization. Okay.
On Monday, I met with Greg O'Brien from Cape Cod Agavins, uh, and attended the police station tour with all of you. Uh, on Tuesday, I attended a meeting at the Perpetual Water Works with representatives from Middleborough Talk in Lakeville to discuss the water level of the coins and related issues. Also met with the chairman and the police chief and attorneys on legal matter, participated in a conference call with NRG concerning sewer credits, Attorney Holland and Bob Patterson participated, and, um, we're, um, we should, within the next two weeks, be getting the final accounting straightened out with NRG, they'll be on the path to having that.
You've said that before.
For regular basis.
You've said, we've said that before.
I know, but this time, somebody up there that's.
You're listening?
Yes. On Wednesday, I attended the town administrator's luncheon in Fayetteville, again, toured the first station building. Thursday and Friday, I worked on the police station OPM and Architect special, Town meeting article, and other general office work. That's my reclamation.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, so I don't, like I usually do, I get the board of help, but this time I wrote Bob's name in there, but he's already taken care of the board of help, I, I didn't, you know? All right, and personal board is up next, Lisa, look, so I can't screw up.
You really are getting old, aren't you?
I am.
Second vote.
Oh.
Thanks.
All right, um, so, discussion regarding who from the board would like to be on the interview panel for the library position. Um, how many applications came in?
I didn't count them, they're probably close to eighteen, I think.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Okay.
I do not want to be on that, because I've voiced my opinion and I.
I'll do it.
There you go.
That's a good choice.
Personal board issue.
All right.
My concern was that we didn't follow town procedures, as I said earlier, and now we're gonna follow town procedure.
Right, well, against, against it.
All right, perfect, so Lucille, um, I'm gonna have Ally send, um, everybody a copy of those, um, applications that we have, and then, um, I'll send an email to each one that's gonna sit on the panel and let them know to review them, and we'll whittle it down to four that we're going to, um, interview. Okay? All right.
Can we make sure everybody that's sitting on the panel is eligible to sit on the panel?
Yes, one time review, see who's sitting on the panel, then I'll, I'll let this board know as well.
So we have a library trustees meeting tomorrow evening.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll be discussing with them.
Sure, and the more, the merrier.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, reaffirm the vote taken on September fourteenth, twenty sixteen, regarding the IOD notice as submitted by Chief Abbott.
Make a motion, second, confirm it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nothing's changed, right?
All right, change of statuses, I'm just gonna go in the order that I have in here, um, and I won't forget Cory Roberts, but it's not on the first one, so, change of status for Steven Abbott, Elton P. Ashley, Thomas Ashley Junior, Thomas, uh, one is for.
One is a little.
One is for seven one fifteen to nine eight fifteen, and one is nine nine fifteen to six thirty.
Because there was a step increase during that period of time.
He reached a regular step on.
Yes.
So that's the old.
I remember seeing, well, the explanation for it, but I just, oh, he's right there, sorry.
He's hiding behind.
I wasn't even paying attention, I'm so sorry.
He's so skinny, can't see his butt past the pool.
All right, so, but these are both correct, correct?
Yes, they are. I had a question, though, before you go too far, Sergeant Ashley's, it appears he's going from an S six to an S five and.
That's the new grid. The old grid, he was an S six, the new grid, he's an S five, even though he has more years, because you condense the number of steps. Remember the, the, uh, the old grid, I think, had seven steps, is that right, Paul?
I think it was seven, yeah. I was for five.
And, and now you're down to five, so.
Oh, okay, so he's maxed out, the S five is max.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, S five, well, you gotta read, but he had, went back in steps, that's why I didn't see.
Yes.
We should, we should probably put like a little addendum on something like that, so in future years, we'll know why that happened, you know what I'm saying?
That he didn't get devoted.
Right, because it may come up at some point.
Okay.
I mean, we've had sort of the same circumstance a couple of weeks ago, um, so I just wanna.
Right, but there.
Yeah.
Townwork.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, we could, we could do a, a notation, uh, you know, new CBA provisions, uh, reduce the number of steps on the grid from seven to five, you know?
May, right, so some people may see a different, you know, whatever category.
Yes, we can do that.
Want to keep going?
Yeah, I just wanted to point it out.
Yeah, because there's another one, Donald Bullock, it's the same thing, P seven to a P five, so you're gonna see that trend, but I just, it should be somewhere noted that there's a reason for that.
Yeah, I think once the copies come back, I could actually put them right through the copying machine with a, a notation on it, you know?
Okay.
A disclaimer that, uh, a reduction in, what appears to be a, a reduction in the step is actually attributable to, uh, the grid change.
Will you send the copy so we can have it filed with you?
Yes, we can do that.
Donald Bullock, Craig Abrah, Michael Cornell, Seth Tomello, Nicholas Drinkline, love that name, Edward Dwyer, Ma Chonchari, Shane Kelly, again Shane Kelly, Patrick Lee, again Patrick Lee, Ben Lebeck, Thomas Long, John Lopes, Swede Magnet, Christopher Medeas, again Christopher Medeas, Ryan Carrera, Kara Pigeon, again Kara Pigeon.
Kara's case, as you recall.
Kara's got three.
Yeah, she went from reserve to forty hours, back to reserve. So there were different rates for, for all of those.
Kara Pigeon again, John Pina, John Pina, Philip Pine, Philip Pine, Scott Rose, John Taylor, and lockup attendant, Stephanie, well, I'll do that separately, so do I have a motion to approve the change of status for the following, for those following officers?
I'll make a motion, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And these were for the retroactive, um, seven one fifteen to six thirty sixteen for those, uh, in the audience. All right, good, change of status here for lockup attendants Stephanie Brum and Lydia St. Lawrence.
Make a motion to approve, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Lauren Moreau for, um, to be the, uh, Taun River Stewardship Council member.
Motion to approve, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Also, um, we have the Assistant Treasurer Collector Step One to Assistant Treasurer, uh, let me take, let me take that back, Assistant Treasurer Step One to Assistant Treasurer Step Two, and Assistant Collector Step Two to Assistant Collector Step Three.
For?
Do I have a motion to approve? Uh, for Lynette Lane Jivell, and Isabel Carrera.
Motion made to approve, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Point Barbara Fluffler as the Citizens for Citizens Rep.
Motion to approve, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, and sign approval, uh, for change of status for Victoria King, um, transfer station attendant at a rate of twenty-one ninety-two to twenty-two oh five, let the service increase.
Motion to approve, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, except Swede's letter of resignation, uh, Abbott.
We had that, no?
No.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Have we been taking role at the last few, um, building committee meetings, too, that's what I'm talking about? Yes, that is a building committee request.
Yes, um, please accept my resignation from the building committee effective immediately, it was my full intention to fulfill my obligation to this committee, however, family commitments have become daunting and increasingly more cumbersome with the hours I work in this schedule I keep associated with working at the police department.